You ready, Ross? All right. Good evening. The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council for Monday, May the 22nd, will be called to order at 7:10 PM. At this time, would everybody willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Pfeiffer, followed by the pledge.
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask for a moment of silence as we contemplate the people's business here this evening. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti?
Present.
Alderman Budge?
Here.
Alderman Peon?
Present.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Here.
Alderman Lippman?
Present.
Alderman Kirby?
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the first item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is approval of agenda.
Before this meeting, several of you reached out to me for amendments to this. So I'll read them as follows. One would be for the referral of O-2517, the issuance of general obligation and bond application notes to the Financial Advisory Commission, which was at the Finance Department's request. A city council proclamation for the Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week. If there's any other additions or deletions from the agenda? Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are requesting that we remove all confirmations from the agenda so that the candidates will have an opportunity to go before the appropriate council committee.
All right. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda's been amended. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with a proclamation for Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The Alliance for the Chesapeake is the group who facilitates the local government advisory commission, which is made up of cities around the headwaters, or of the headwater states. Maryland, Virginia, Pennsylvania, Washington DC, New York, and West Virginia. And so, all of the members of that committee, myself being one, have been asked to spread the word about the Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week. And so, this proclamation from the city council reads as follows. "City of Annapolis proclamation. Whereas the Chesapeake Bay is the largest, and at one time, the most productive estuary in the United States, spanning six states and the District of Columbia; and whereas the Chesapeake Bay watershed is an extraordinary and vital natural resource, as well as an integral part of the history and heritage of our state capitol; and whereas the Chesapeake Bay is fed by fifty major tributaries, and more than one hundred thousand streams, creeks, and rivers, which thread through the watershed, and contains more than fifteen trillion gallons of water; and whereas the Chesapeake Bay's rivers and streams send about fifty-one billion gallons of fresh water into the Chesapeake Bay every day; and whereas the Chesapeake Bay stretches two hundred miles from Havittah Grace, Maryland, to Norfolk, Virginia, has an average depth of twenty-one feet, and ranges from 3.4 to thirty-five miles wide, supporting three hundred and forty-eight species of fish, a hundred and seventy-three species of shellfish, and more than thirty-six hundred species of plant and animal life, including twenty-seven hundred types of plants, and more than sixteen species of underwater grasses; and whereas the Chesapeake Bay area is home to more than seventeen million people, many of whom rely upon the bay for their livelihood and recreational activities; and whereas, as an important source of food for Maryland and the east coast of the United States, the Chesapeake Bay produces more than five hundred million pounds of seafood harvest annually; and whereas, the rich history, pivotal economic importance, and astounding beauty of the Chesapeake Bay watershed never ceases to amaze residents and visitors alike; and whereas, the city of Annapolis recognizes the importance of Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week, and urges all citizens to observe and participate in events, activities, and educational programs designed to increase awareness of the importance of the Chesapeake Bay to our community. Now therefore, and it's signed by the mayor, the city of Annapolis, and the Annapolis City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of June 2nd through the 12th, 2017, as Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week in the city of Annapolis." Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committee.
Is there any other person that would like to present a report? Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met, we met last week, on May 15th, last Monday. And we went over the O-2017 Transportation Network Service Companies. And after a brief discussion and review, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval on the part of the council as a whole. That was the extent of our meeting last week. Our next meeting will be on June the 14th at 6:30 PM, right here in the chambers chamber. And the public is, of course, invited. We will be reviewing matters of interest, including legislation, before the council that's assigned to our committee at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Alderman Budge?
Mayors, and members of the council, and of the public. The Transportation Committee met earlier this evening to discuss two pieces of legislation. O-2017, the Transportation Network Service Companies, which Alderman Peon just mentioned. We too gave the, a favorable endorsement. We also reviewed O-2317, Certificate of Adequate Public Facilities, Police Protection. And despite the city manager's objections to us taking away his sidearm, we endorsed the legislation to the entire council.
Thank you. Alderman Lippman? Microphone? Anyone else? Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on May 15th here in council chambers. We took up one piece of legislation, Certificate of Adequate Public Facilities, not talking well, and gave a favorable recommendation for that piece of legislation. We also heard from Chief Stokes on the working committee dealing with abandoned and vacant buildings. Actually, I think there's legislation to come. And we had a report on a hurricane conference that two of our employees attended. We are quickly approaching hurricane season, and our staff is getting prepared for the season. We're also into Zika season, and so we had an update from Deputy Chief Simmons on what people should be doing to protect from the Zika virus. We also had a report from Alderman Peon. He gave a report on the work group who had the charge of addressing concerns that were presented to this council from the Caucus of African-American Leaders. That report will be presented, again, in total at the next meeting on the 14th of June. And the members of the committee, as well as the police chief and the unions are invited to attend, as well as the public. And lastly, we heard from Acting Chief Baker. He gave us the latest crime stats, and I think he sent those stats out to all the council members. Our next meeting is June 14th at 5 o'clock, which I think is a Wednesday. Because of MML, we're meeting on a different date. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The rules and city government met on May 9th. At 4 o'clock is our usual meeting time. We recommended favorably on two pieces of legislation that will be before the council tonight. The food stores in the C-2A zone, and the Certificate of Adequate Public Facilities for Police. Our next meeting will be on 13th of June at 4 o'clock here in council chambers.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can speak on anything that is not already scheduled for a public hearing this evening. So if you came to talk about the budget, boat launch enforcement, or general obligation bonds, those public hearings will be immediately following this one. One person signed up. Arthur Roberts. And Sam Bryce.
Oh, whoops. Hello? Okay. I just want you guys to know that before I get started, I'm not here to offend anyone. I'm here to help. My family's been here. My grandkids are seventh-generation Anapolitans. We've done a lot for the city. We live at the top of the hill here on Dugaldsler, across from St. Mary's. We see a lot that's going on with the flooding. And that's one of the things I wanted to discuss, as well as the trash. Once again, I'm not here to offend. I'm just here to point out a few things.
Could we just get your name and address for the record?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Arthur Roberts. I live at 108 Dugaldsler Street. My grandchildren are seventh-generation Anapolitans. I just wanted to add that. Cutting the funding for the bay cleaning is a bad idea, and this is why. The city docks are where the flooding is the worst. It isn't as bad at the Naval Academy, or the neighborhood to the right of the Eastport Bridge. Take a penny and drop it into a glass of water, and the water rises. That is what all the car runoff and pollution caused by faulty trash pickup is causing, while the oils and pollutants block the seepage into the ground under the water at the docks, causing a worse and worse flooding problem every time it rains. It used to flood once every twelve years or so, and now it floods every time it rains. It's not the bay's problem, it's the people throwing the trash into the bay's problem. The bay isn't growing, it's like dropping a penny in the water. Every time it rains, it gets worse. Hold on, I didn't type it, sorry. Trash is picked up by a private company, and private companies who do very sloppy jobs, leaving trash all over the streets that run into the water as well. I have coffee at the city dock every morning, City Dock Cafe, and the trash problem's worse and worse. They don't pick it up in time, they come late, they leave trash all over the place. And it's not our city guys at all. It's the companies, the private companies that we're hiring. For what reason, I don't know. I think that our city, we need our city trash trucks back that we sold. Okay? They should come back. We should have our jobs, our people taking care of our own trash. The people that live here that did a good job. We're wasting our taxpayers' money on trashmen who do a bad job and spend their money in their own towns, instead of the locals who used to do a good job early in the morning on time, without leaving trash all over the streets. And the money they made, they spent in their hometown here. The smell of methane caused by the trash in our sewers is permeating through the air, just waiting for someone to chuck a cigarette into them, starting an underground fire that will be far worse than just a trashy, stinky city. There is a solution. Hang no-littering $200 fine signs every now and then, make them look antique or whatever, and enforce the law. Put it in the front of the paper, which we don't even own anymore. It will calm the pollution problem. Clean the docks by dredging and clean the sewers instead of wasting taxpayers' money trying to control a worsening problem that will get worse every time it rains. Also, control the flow of traffic coming in and out of the city. We have a traffic flow problem, not a parking problem. We could do what other historic cities do, and cut the traffic and shuttle them in with horse and buggies, petty cabs, rent bikes, and fill the buses we spent so much money on that aren't being used as much as they should. This will make less oil and grease and car runoff that flows directly into the docks, causing more flood problems. We sold out our recreation center to make condos that cost a lot of money, but no one's going to want to live or park where they have to wallow in sewer water every time it rains. By controlling the traffic flow and cleaning the trash and enforcing the littering laws, we will stop the flooding and have less traffic and pollution. Doesn't this make more sense than wasting money and time while the problem gets worse? When will City Hall, sorry, realize, they work for the city, the city doesn't work for them? Stop selling our city out. We need our recreation centers, and clean streets, and market houses, and newspapers. Stop selling them. They don't belong to you. They belong to the city people. They belong to people of the city that trust you to run the city. I even heard before Panaliti's was mayor, the snowplows plowed in front of the mayor's house, before the hospitals, firehouses, and police stations. Hopefully someday, someone will address these issues before thinking of their own personal gain. The traffic flow and pollution problems are simple, and easy, and can generate jobs and money for the city instead of causing more damage and costing the city money. Thank you again for your time. Hopefully, you won't waste anymore. Thank you. And one more thing. Hi, Mom.
Thank you, sir. On the snow comment, I can assure you, because all my neighbors were banging on my door, why isn't our street getting done first? My street is not the first to get done.
No, I didn't say yours. I said before you were mayor.
Oh.
And the people that work in the city are the ones that told me that it was being plowed in front of the mayor's house, before the police stations, fire halls. Not yours. I didn't say. I said before you were mayor.
I misheard you. Thank you.
Really, I know nothing about you. I don't even remember voting. I don't know if I voted for anyone. I'm afraid to vote. I really am. And all I care about is the city. And, you know, I want my kids to grow up with a playground. I want my kids to be able to swim and fish in the water that I used to swim and fish in. My mother, her mother before her, and her mother before her, and her mother and father before her. And it's only fair to the people that elect you that you guys take care of them, and not spend their money trying to control the flooding when we can stop the flooding. We could stop it by dredging and cleaning every 20 years or so, instead of trying to control the problem as it gets worse and worse and paying more and more. We can just stop the problem. We can control the flow of traffic. You know, and that would help fill our parking lots that we don't use. And our buses that aren't getting filled, that we paid so much for. And our trash. You know, and, you know, what are we going to sell our libraries next? And build condos and those, too? I just don't understand, you know, that this could happen in such a town that everyone used to care about, it seems. And, you know, even our meter maids, they moved to the eastern shore. When our meter maids move to the eastern shore, we know we got a parking problem. So, you know, the parking problem is not the problem. There's ample parking. It's a traffic flow problem. And I don't want to take any more of your time. I just hope that these issues are taken care of.
We will take a look at them. Thank you for coming by. Sam Bryce?
Samuel McLean Bryce, 1811 Old Annapolis Boulevard, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. As I think most of you know, I'm a city employee. I've been here for just shy of 32 years, like, a little bit less than two weeks. I've come to speak very briefly on ordinance 28-17. I know that is before you all today. I have a petition from some of the employees here, but I just want to offer a couple of very quick comments. You know, I've mulled over in my mind a bunch of things I would like to say, and I've kind of decided not to do that. Rather, I'm going to say this. When city employees heard about this law, I think the first thing that they were, were concerned. I think the second thing was they were hurt. When you look at everything the city employees have done here, the things they have given up, the fact that they have given exemplary, and well above what they are asked to do, service to the city, it can, when a proposal like this comes forward, it can only be, it can only be seen as something that is very hurtful to them. I think the third thing is the proposal of this just shows a great deal of disrespect to the citizen, to the city employees. Because I've been here for as long as I have, I have seen the whole gamut at the Hillman Garage. I have seen, as it started out, the senior people had parking. Everyone else parked out at the stadium. As became apparent that people were not using the Hillman Garage, the city employees were allowed to park on the roof. When it became apparent that the second floor wasn't being used, the city employees were then allowed to park on the second floor. You know, we have been through this gamut any number of times. I read the, I read, I didn't read the actual reports, but I read what you, the previous reports, previous statements regarding what should be done with Hillman Garage, take the employees out of the garage, all of that. I will tell you the truth. I've heard that so many times. The truth of the matter is, it's never passed the smell test. When the rubber hits the road, it just doesn't work. I would urge you not to let this ordinance, or proposed ordinance, go forward. Kill it now. Don't damage the morale of your employees any further. I've been asked to give you some petitions that the employees have signed, and I would present that to. Thank you very much.
Alderman Lippman?
Mr. Bryce? I wonder what your opinion would be if we were starting the rules from scratch in the Hillman Garage, if it was brand new? Explain to me either the challenges or lack of challenges if we asked employees to park at a garage with regular shuttle service?
I think if that is something you want to do, I think then we should apply that across the board to the employees. Okay? And by that, I mean, look around. Fire has onsite parking. Police have onsite parking. Recreation and Parks have onsite parking. Onsite parking, to a great extent, the Harbor Master has some onsite parking. We wind up here at City Hall, and our onsite parking is the Hillman Garage. I think what I have seen historically is that the garage is rarely full. That we have, the employees have watched that for years. And I will be very honest, there was a period of time where everyone else was parking on the second deck. I was parking on the roof, just to see how many people were actually parking up there. And on most days, you could have shot a shotgun off and not hit a car. There just is not that, the garage just doesn't have that level of use.
I'm not sure that answers my question. So, if we asked the employees who work in these two buildings to park at another garage with regular shuttle service, explain to me why that would or would not work?
I think what you would find is you would progressively lose a lot of good employees. I will tell you that I hired someone years ago who came to work for the city. They came to work for the city from Baltimore City. They were working in the Baltimore Crime Lab. And they came to work for the city for less money, but they were tired of the threats on their life. We were parking at, many were parking at the stadium at the time. They were being shuttled on a regular basis. She lasted two days and went back to work in Baltimore. I think you would just lose a number of very good people. I don't think they're willing to do that. I think you're going to find that you will begin to lose working mothers, because they need to have their vehicle close at hand in the event that their children have issues. You're also going to lose working fathers, because I know I, when I was, my wife was working out of town when my son was in school, when I was the one who had to go in the event of emergency to get him. So, people will look for jobs elsewhere that may have better benefits. You know, they may have better hours, they may, well, I doubt they'll have better hours, but they may have better salaries.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, Mr. Bryce. Thanks. Hey, I think my colleague's saying that we all know invariably, the Hillman Garage is going to be replaced. Nobody has a timetable. So invariably, folk are going to have to park elsewhere. He wants to know why, or why that would not work.
When, and I think that's a very good question. When we did the repairs on the Hillman Garage a number of years ago, that's exactly what happened. The people who had handicap problems got to park in the Hillman Garage. Everyone else parked at various satellite sites. Most of them were at GOTS. Some of us, primarily those who had city vehicles, parked down at the dock. But when it was finished and the repairs were made, we all came back to Hillman.
Alderman Pan?
How do you think the employees would feel if they were given the option of parking somewhere else for free with the shuttle, or getting a steeply discounted parking rate if they really wanted to park here? I mean, I think you'd have employees parking here maybe a couple of days a week, and taking the shuttle the rest of the time. Look, I'm not saying that that's a desirable situation by any means, but just as a compromise, if it comes down to that. I mean, not everybody provides free parking for their employees. There's no question about that. But three or four bucks a day, a couple of days a week, when you really have to use the car. Look, we can't really reimburse them that kind of money salary-wise, but it seems like that might be a little bit better than having them, when they've got to go pick up little Susie from school early, having to wait for a shuttle bus and...
I can't speak for other employees what, how they would feel about it. If you gave me a discounted rate at 64 years old, going on 65, would I park here or park at GOTS? I'll tell you, I'll park here. When I was 20, I might think about it. But I think that any, and you're right, every place doesn't give free parking, but the city does. All the other employees, except the people who live in these, work in these two buildings, have free parking. You're right.
Thank you.
Oh, three buildings, you're right, three buildings.
Alderman Finlayson?
Mr. Bryce, thank you for reminding us that there is a history behind this. I remember, I guess, maybe two administrations ago, when we were testing out the shuttle. And some of my colleagues and I decided to park our cars at a satellite garage and catch the shuttle in. And we ended up going back and getting our cars. So, we've gone this route, but obviously, we need to have this discussion again. And rest assured, when we do have this discussion, it's going to be about the value of our employees, what we are willing to pay our employees, and how we pay for our services across the board, whether it's on the backs of our employees or on the citizens who are getting the services that you guys, and I keep saying, we're a service organization. You provide the service for us. So I just want to say thank you for reminding us to go back and look at how we got here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the public would like to speak? Now is your opportunity.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Kardashian. I reside at One Act In Place in Annapolis. And I'd like to comment on an idea that resurfaced because of a comment that the mayor made in the Capitol last week. Your comment was referring to request from the Finance Committee for an internal audit, among other things. You were quoted as saying that you opposed these recommendations because they would fundamentally change the city's form of government. The more I thought about this, I felt if the council is trying to change the form of government, then maybe this is an opportunity to get the council to consider yet again a change to the council manager form of government. For those of you who may have missed the last iteration of discussions about a council manager form of government in two thousand nine, it is the dominant form of government in over four thousand municipalities throughout the U.S. And unlike Annapolis, where our own Mr. Andrews, our very competent city manager, is under the direct supervision of the mayor, a true council manager form has the city manager responsible to the full council, not just the mayor. I won't reiterate how the details of how the council manager form works. For the most part, it scares the heck out of most mayors in the council manager structure. Why? Because the operational responsibility for the government falls on the council, with the essential help of a qualified and experienced city manager. And don't most mayors want to have total control? But unlike Annapolis, where the city manager answers to the mayor, the council has that responsibility in a council manager form of government. The other reason this suggestion is timely is, one, Mayor Panalides will be term limited out if he is reelected, and two, should another candidate be elected in November, we can press for the essential charter changes by two thousand twenty-one. Mayor Panalides, if he prevails, will function just as he does today. If a new mayor is elected in November, he would have four years to function as we presently do, and then move to a council manager form. So, how can we make this happen? The change to council manager can be accomplished in one of two ways. One, by a referendum at the next city election, or two, by majority of a council vote. I can tell you firsthand that a referendum, while not impossible, is a huge task. Sometime, if any of you have an hour or a week and a glass of wine or two, I can give you excruciating detail. But the opportunity for this council to provide a true legacy in the form of the best government form possible is here now. Mr. Mayor, you get a free pass. Nothing will change for you. Should you prevail in November, you can set the wheels in motion for the next administration and the eventual council manager form of government. What a fantastic legacy you can leave. Please think about it, all of you. Alderman Peone, I want to have a special conference with you. And while you're thinking, you may be interested to know that Rockville, Gaithersburg, Bowie, Salisbury, Tacoma Park, Aberdeen, and many other cities in Maryland have adopted the council manager form. You might also be interested to know that three municipal governments in Maryland have the mayor council and partisan elections. Baltimore, Frederick, and you guessed it, Annapolis. Personally speaking, partisan politics at the local level are the cause of most local controversies. We don't need any of that. I hope you will set aside partisan politics and do what's best for Annapolis. Consider a change to a council manager form in this election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to come forward?
My name is Maria Brown. You all probably know me. I am the Assistant Director at Planning and Zoning. Like Sam Bryce, I've been here a long time. In January, I just celebrated forty-two years. So, I've been here since I was a teenager. And for most of that time, we have been allowed to park in the Hillman Parking Garage, and we appreciate that. But what I wanted to speak on was to address Alderman Littman's question, what are the challenges? Well, personally, those of you who know me well know, I've been through a lot of health challenges. And thank God, I'm able to walk and still work. However, on Friday, I believe it was Friday, we were not able to park in the garage because of some repair work. And it wasn't a problem, we got to park at Gottes. We, I came, I walked down because it's good exercise. But by Friday evening, it was approximately ninety-two degrees outside. And if you've walked from Gottes, you're then walking uphill, not downhill. So, I left the office and said, I'm going to go out and I'm going to catch the shuttle. Shuttle never came. I kind of knew that, because that has been the norm, is that we come out of the parking garage at Gottes, we look for a shuttle. I had an employee who was new to having to park at Gottes, who called me that morning and said, I just walked up West Street to the top of Church Circle, where do you catch the shuttle? And I said, well, if you've gotten that far, you might as well walk all the way to work, because you will not see the shuttle before you get to work. When I got to work, I asked four other employees, did you all see the shuttle, or did you catch the shuttle? No one saw the shuttle. Five different people coming in at five different times, we never saw a shuttle. We have people who work in our building who have multiple sclerosis, we have people who have pacemakers that don't mind walking, but when it's ninety-some degrees outside, walking back and forth, that can be a challenge. We even had an employee whose child had a seizure at work, who had to walk to Gottes to get to their car. We also have inspectors, you can't drive two cars, so they bring their personal car to work because they're no longer able to take it home, and then they have to get the city car. So, on Friday, one city employee had to find a ride out to Gottes today to get her city car, which was left at Gottes, because she drove her personal car in. There are challenges, and I, you will see, am the first signature on that petition. And one of the reasons is, first of all, I'm probably on my way out the door, if I've been here that long, but I'm also fighting for those employees who are not out the door, is that there are challenges, and we just feel like, we know that when the garage is knocked down and repaired, or whatever is going to happen, that we're going to have to park somewhere else. We just feel like we want to say, come to us and say, hey, look, you know, the merchants are complaining, or for whatever reason, you want us out of the garage, help us come up with some alternatives. That's all we ask, is talk to us, you know, don't just start an ordinance, because it does make employees upset. Just come to us and say, we want you out of that garage, we need alternatives, what are the problems, what are the issues, what do we need to work out first? And that's all we ask, is that we have a say, because we are dealing with it every single day. And so, we know what the challenges are. If you all say, sorry, you can't park in the Hillman Garage, you have to get shuttled. We know what the challenges are, and so, we just ask that our voice be heard in the process of coming up with something else. Thank you.
Alderman Felason has a question for you. First of all...
Ms. Brown. Have employees ever taken the inspectors? Have they ever taken their cars home?
Yes, there are still some who do, but there came a period in time where there were no, those new people, or people who were put into new inspector positions or field positions, were no longer allowed to take their cars home. So, there are quite a few who still do, but there are some who cannot.
Okay.
And one of the issues on Friday was, okay, where do we leave our car? Do we leave it in the Hillman Garage? Do we leave it out of Gottes? And how do we get our personal vehicle? You can't drive two cars. So, yes, there are inspectors who are no longer allowed to take their vehicles home.
And approximately, how many cars are we talking about that are driven by the inspectors and parked in the garage here?
I would say, I know, in my office, we have maybe ten, ten to fifteen at the most, and that's probably including Public Works.
Okay. I'm sure we'll get into this, but, okay, thank you.
I have a comment to make. First of all, thank you for your years of service. One of the things we've done to make the circulator more reliable is we have an app, RLF Shuttle. It's available on Google Play in the App Store. It tells you in real time where the shuttle is, and I believe it actually has GPS location. So, at Five Park Place, it should be there at seven fifty-six P.M., and it lays it out for you.
It would be helpful if you all would send that out, because we don't know anything.
I will make sure, first thing tomorrow morning, my office emails that to all the employees.
Thank you.
Again, available on the App Store and iTunes.
Alderman Littman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Brown, thank you for coming tonight. You do have a sterling reputation, and I've known you for a little bit of time.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate your testimony tonight. My question is just this. If this employees parking elsewhere was not just a once-in-a-while solution, isolated solution, but more permanent basis, are you not confident that the city could get its circulator and patterns and everything working better? Not perfect.
I would like to be confident, but this isn't the first time. As you know, for years, or as long as I can remember, we are required to park out at the garage out of Gottes during the boat shows, which is a two-week period. I think there was a time when we actually had to park out there doing Blue Angels and whatever events, you know, are going to be downtown. And you don't hear anyone complain about that. Hey, we understand that, keep this open for the residents and the visitors, we understand that. If we could get something more reliable, that would be great. It's still going to be a little bit of a challenge, because, you know, with any, but that's with any bus service, you pull up and they just pulled off. So, here, I wanted to be a little early getting to work, and now I've got to wait ten, fifteen minutes for the next one. It also is inconvenient if I've got a doctor's appointment. So, if my, right now, if my appointment's at two, and it's over on Forest Drive, I can leave here at quarter to two and be there, if it's not a whole lot of traffic on Forest Drive. But if I've got to get to my car, I might have to leave an extra half hour, forty-five minutes. Right now, I'm on baby watch, I'm having my first grandchild any minute.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I wouldn't be too happy if I was parked up at Gottes and I got the call, you know? So, I know that, like I said, that's what I want, is I want the interaction between the aldermen, and the mayor too, and the employee to say, okay, what can we do? What alternatives, what can work? Just not, hey, we're taking you out of the garage and we don't care what you say. There aren't very many of us here today, a lot of employees, I think, fell intimidated. But they, as you will see, signed the petition. We have three pages worth of signatures from employees that use the garage. But we know that your intention is not to be disrespectful. We understand what your intention is. However, someone needs to say, hey, talk to us and find out what a better alternative might be.
Well, thanks again for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
I think your suggestion about having some discussions and communication is usually a very good one, and so, I'm sure it's a good one in this case as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Penotrell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I want to say, I would hope that I, or no one on this council or in this building would allow some employee to feel intimidated for putting their name on a petition for something that's truly valid. I don't think you all do, to be quite honest with you. I think that's just the way they feel. I mean, you know, it could have been used as an excuse, I don't know, but it was important enough to us who attended, because we felt like, okay, we'll go, nothing may happen, they may still pass the ordinance, but if we don't go, it's kind of saying, we don't care what you do. And we do care. So, that's why we're here, and I can't speak for why the other ones are not. I thank the employees for signing it. And for you all coming. Thank you. Ms. Brown and Mr. Bryce, thank you.
Alderman Bryce.
Yes, Ms. Brown, first of all, I thank you for both yourself and Mr. Bryce for coming to speak with us tonight. This legislation is far from being done, and I look forward, I love your suggestion about talking with the employees and listening and seeing how we can make this work, and I look forward to working with the administration to see how we can set that up and make that conversation happen.
Good, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Now is your opportunity. Seeing the motions, I declare comments by the general public closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
All right, we had a busy month. First of all, I want to thank Jim Shevers of United States Naval Academy. For all of his years of service, he's retiring after fifty-three years, he was a member of numerous clubs and organizations. I was able to give him a proclamation from the mayor, naming a day after him last week. Also, we had Bike to Work Day. I want to thank the Annapolis Regional Transportation Management Association. We installed new bike racks downtown. This was a great way to promote people bicycling to work, it was a fantastic event. We had a flood demonstration, many of you may have seen in the Capitol. We brought in two vendors that do this all over the world. These people protect the strategic oil reserves, they do it for large Fortune One Thousand corporations, and we figured, what are we going to do during a storm surge? We're taking a very proactive approach on how we can address flooding and sea level rise and climate change in the future. We also had a ribbon cutting for Chipotle, one of our newest businesses downtown. This week, as you all know, the class of two thousand seventeen, nearly one thousand men and women are going to be graduating from the United States Naval Academy. Just want to thank them for all their countless hours of service. Many people forget, they're the ones that are shoveling people out of their driveways in snow for the elderly, they're volunteering at our Boys and Girls Club and after-school hour, so they're really an asset and gem in the community. Last thing, and it'll come up at the next council meeting, is we made an announcement for our Acting Chief of Police, Scott Baker in the background. I think we should give him a round of applause for the service he's done. We won't get into all of it now, but he has sixteen community initiatives that he's addressed for violent crime, community outreach, and the opioid epidemic. So, during his confirmation, we'll be sure to get into all of those. Other than that, we had an Annapolis Fire Station. You know, part of this, we honor men and women that do things that are extraordinary. And just tell the story real quick. Our first responders helped save someone's life, someone who was a daughter of one of our city employees. Lynn broke off a tree during a thunderstorm, and it crashed through the windshield of her car. And she was riding, and it impaled her leg, went all the way through. She was transported to shock trauma, and is home still recuperating. But because of the hard work and the men and women of Station Eight, she survived that incident. And I have to say, after seeing the photographs, if they weren't there as quickly as they were, she may not have made it out. So, we're very fortunate to have these people protecting us on a day-to-day basis, and that concludes my update from the mayor.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include, first reader's O-13-17, parking enforcement and rulemaking responsibilities referred to Public Safety Committee, Transportation Committee, and Transportation Board. O-27-17, special parking permits for transport and contractors referred to Public Safety Committee, Transportation Committee, and Transportation Board. O-28-17, removing city employee parking from Hillman Garage referred to Public Safety Committee, Transportation Committee, and Transportation Board. O-29-17, double parking referred to Public Safety Committee, Transportation Committee, and Transportation Board. On second reader, you have O-6-17, lease of city property to Chesapeake Marine Tours. O-20-17, city-sponsored special events of fiscal year two thousand eighteen. And O-23-17, certificate of adequate public facilities. That's the end of the consent calendar items.
Is there any objection to the consent calendar? Alderman Littman?
No objection, I'm just looking for clarity from our city attorney. When you said O-6-17, I have, that's food stores in CTA, in C2A districts, and I think you said something about Watermark?
Oh, yeah, it looks like I got the wrong label, yes, but you are correct.
Okay, and then same thing, O-20-17 is transportation network service companies, not what you said.
Correct. Sorry, I got my agenda mixed up. You are correct though.
That's not her error, that's mine. I'm sorry.
All right. I'm not worried about the error, I just want to make sure we're putting on...
I got the numbers correct, I got the wrong labels.
All right, very good, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Panalides?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Bug?
Aye.
Alderman Pinnell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman St. Lason?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer. He's first. Yeah.
He gets to vote twice?
No.
I've been waiting for years for that.
Yeah.
It's an early vote.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public hearings continued with ordinance O-21-17, annual operating budget fiscal year 2018, for the purpose of adopting an operating budget for the City of Annapolis for fiscal year 2018, appropriating funds for expenditures for fiscal year 2018, defraying all expenses and liabilities of the City of Annapolis, and levying same for the purposes specified, specifying certainties of the Director of Finance, and specifying a rate of interest to be charged upon overdue property taxes.
Group approval? There was nobody sign up in advance to speak? Would you like to address the council on this? Now is your opportunity.
[inaudible] Recently, the county has proposed a new position in the fact that we need police officers to be responsible for the mayor's public service. Although I'm skeptical of this, we'd rather be the only police officer. We're about to introduce a police leader. It's not a good idea. So, we need to add more sworn officers before we even see a community police every 10 years or five months old. But I think it seems unlikely to reduce our local police officers when and if their efforts are successful. Then I immediately remind myself, remember, it's all I can do. And another recommended position is the addition of city auditors. While the county has had auditors for years, their budgets have been accessed at 1.3 billion, more than 10 times larger than the city's budget. Should we scale the salary accordingly? That's how it's proposed by any budget. But I'm also concerned that any auditor will be heightened in partisan political potential that exists. In general, internal auditors are financial investigators.
Investigators. Thank you. Are financial investigators. Their charge is to look at anything and to determine if it's either unnecessary, erroneous, or improper. For larger state and local governments, it may make sense. You already get most of that insight from your outside auditors. But to create this as an in-house position answering to the council is, in my view, neither productive nor healthy for the community. Who will determine the issues for the audit? Any aldermen? The full council? Or just the majority of the council? The Financial Advisory Committee? The Finance Committee? There are lots of questions to be resolved. As I frequently do, I check to see how Rockville, Gaithersburg, and Bowie handle this need. No surprises. None of them has an internal auditor. Each of these cities is 50% to 70% larger than Annapolis in population and in physical size, yet doesn't see fit for an internal auditor. Rockville does have two staff budget analysts in the finance office, but these positions may correlate with existing positions in our own finance office. Gaithersburg nor Bowie have either budget analysts or internal auditors. And as I have testified in the past, the number of full-time equivalent employees is substantially lower on a per capita basis than in Annapolis. The question is, how do they serve their community needs with fewer city employees? Hmm. How do they? One idea I offer for the council is to create an audit commission composed of two to three elected officials and a couple of citizens with high-level audit experience. We have a great talent pool in Annapolis, and it shouldn't be difficult to get competent volunteer help. They would meet quarterly at least, and much like our Financial Advisory Committee, weigh in irrelevant issues. To me, this makes much more sense than creating a new $100,000-plus position that I'm sure will require a support budget as well. Please, shove this idea for now. The question of contractual outside legal counsel is another unnecessary expense that I believe has the ability to overrun the modest, for legal purposes, $100,000 budget you have suggested. Just for curiosity, I called a couple of attorney friends and asked them what hourly rate they would charge the city for legal services. On average, the rate was, at a minimum, $250 to $300 per hour. You're seeking a $100,000 budget for outside legal help. That converts to no more than 400 hours of time, 20% of a work year, about one day a week. But unless you contract with a multi-specialty law firm, you will need to find counsel conversant and competent in zoning law, labor law, environmental law, litigation, and any number of other areas of specialization confronting the city. I hope you'll rethink this need. The request for additional planning and zoning staff because of an existing zoning backlog may actually make sense. But the bigger question is how projects are managed, not just the number of staff involved. I continue to hear from developer friends that Annapolis doesn't move as efficiently as the county, and everything takes longer than it should. And, quote, "The community is very active and involved." Time and efficiency you may be able to affect, but can you limit community involvement? Only at your peril. Bigger isn't always better. Some of the major projects facing the city are both controversial and complicated. Zoning code deficiencies and lack of clarity only exacerbate the process. Will new proposed planning and zoning staff solve these high-level problems? I doubt it. So, I realize placing a hold on the new auditor in legal positions may not be to your liking. If so, then I challenge you to find alternate budget cuts to offset the several hundred thousand dollars in new expenses you will likely incur. In a budget in excess of $100 million, cutting less than one-half of 1% shouldn't be that difficult. Try it. You might find it inspirational. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Try it. You'll like it. I noticed, Mr. Kardashian, that you didn't talk about the additional staff person for finance, a budget officer, and I wondered if that was an oversight or you felt?
No, I kind of, no, that's a good question. Actually, I just focused on the ones that kind of jumped out at me the most. I also didn't address bond debt. Not that those are insignificant issues, but there's only so much time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Littman? Thank you. Again, also, like Alderman Arnett, thank you for coming tonight. It's always useful and interesting to hear your commentary. And so, I'm not here to debate, just to give you some context on one of the points regarding an auditor. I intend to introduce legislation that I've been working on to establish a standing city council audit committee that would be made up of three older persons, like the existing committees, and then like the housing committee in particular, have three citizen volunteer positions to help guide people who would have more experience on audit committees. As I would envision it, at least, the rest of the council may feel differently, and we'll hear that when the legislation is being considered, the audit committee would help interact with the auditor as far as the guidance that you were, questions that you're asked about. So, again, not trying to debate with you, just to give you some additional context of at least how one person behaves.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I think, so my position was mostly one of not incurring that as another city burden, financial burden. I think of it as done as a commission, where basically you're taking volunteer help. We have some great talent in and around the city who I think would step up and offer their, you know, I think the time is always the big commitment, but, you know, we have great people in the Financial Advisory Commission, and I've seen some of the other commissions. So, I think we could really recruit some really top-notch people.
What I would envision is, especially in the first year after the audit committee is established, of course, if it's established, is that there wouldn't be a rush necessarily to hire an auditor, although it's a possibility, the committee would start with hiring a contract position with a outside auditor to help set up a framework of how to be efficient and effective, and potentially that would lead to the hiring of the auditor.
You know, the underside, too, which I just, just if I can just add to this, the question is, would an auditor, a staff auditor, I mean, I could see a rush in the early stages because it's kind of a novelty, and I'm sure you all have big lists of things you'd want some of. But I don't, but I just wonder if they'd find enough to do in a 35-hour week, just on an annualized basis. So, either they're going to, are they going to be scratching around, looking at things that are less productive? And given the savings that you're trying to generate, or the savings that we hope you try to generate, and the impact that you want to see an auditor have, I'm not sure that you're going to see that.
It's certainly possible that, after consideration, the audit committee would want a part-time auditor for the reasons that you described. I think that that initial year, when the outside auditors brought in to help describe the scope and do an initial assessment, I think that would more than likely help the committee decide whether a full-time or part-time inside auditor was needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate the dialogue. Thank you.
Alderman Pan?
Actually, that was my, that was my question. How would you feel about having an auditor for three or four months, something like that? I don't know if we need one all year long, but certainly at budget time, I think when we've had a position that at least was similar to an auditor's position, it was helpful to a number of people on the council. I might add that the county is actually 14 times the size of the city, and unless their budget is over a billion and a half, then I think maybe your argument about an auditor not being able to save money might not be correct. I mean, they, and they, actually, it's a council's auditor. I ended up on the wrong end of one of her observations. It cost me quite a bit of money, actually, but be that as it may, I don't know. I mean, the committee thing, I'm afraid the findings of a committee will go the way the findings of so many of our committees go, and that is out the door and down the hall and out the front door.
Well, that's always a concern with committees and commissions. But, you know, just to respond to your question about the county, so the county's budget's 1.3 billion.
Which is less than 14.
Which is, which is, but, you know, once you're beyond 10, what's the difference? Right? And so, the impact of $150,000 on your employee could be, you know, it can be significant.
Well, what about somebody who isn't here perhaps a whole year, but just several months out of the year? Or the equivalent?
I think your biggest challenge is finding somebody who wants that kind of job. You know, a high-level skill level, you know, are they going to be retired? It's going to be a part-time job? Or it's going to be, you're going to want to find somebody who's in the, kind of the middle of their career, and I don't think, you know, I think finding somebody for a three or four, you know, unless, you know, and to some extent, you have, you have outside auditors now who come in and do that same, that same job.
Alderman Pinnell Charles?
Yeah. Mr. Kardashian, you said the county has a $1.3 billion budget? That's the school system. Right. Okay. Right. Exactly. Okay. All right. I'm getting my point threes and fives confused.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare O-21-17 closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ID-198-17, City of Annapolis Proposed Real Property Tax Increase.
Nobody will sign up in advance to speak? If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare ID-198-17 closed.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification, on O-21-17, did you close the public hearing?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-81-17, Personal Care Establishments in the PM District for the purpose of removing restrictions on the operation of a personal care establishment in the PM Professional Mixed Office Zoning District.
Anybody who would like to address the council? Now is your opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that this be kept open until the next council meeting. I did speak with the, well, an individual that's directly affected by this, who could not be here this evening, but would like to be heard. She was here for the Planning Commission hearing involving this, and she's not here for lack of interest, I can tell you that.
Alderman Pinnell Charles?
Yes, I would agree with Alderman Pay on this specifically affects Wards 2 and 3. I've gotten a favorable recommendation from the folks in Ward 3, but I would definitely agree with Alderman Pay on to keep it open.
We will keep it open to the next council meeting then. And I accept into the record a memorandum to the Annapolis City Council from the Planning Commission dated May 4, 2017. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-24-17, Boat Launch Enforcement Authority for the purpose of permitting an authorized agent of the City of Annapolis to exercise a limited authority in boat launch enforcement, ensuring that patrons that utilize boat ramps pay appropriate launching fees, and matters generally relating to extending boat launch enforcement powers to an authorized agent.
If you would like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on O-24-17 closed. Would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-25-17, Issuance of General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
If there's nobody signed up in advance to speak, if you'd like to address the council? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on O-25-17 closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Legislative Actions on First Readers, beginning with Resolution R-20-17, Lanell Lane for the Purpose of Renaming Chase Street to Lanell Lane for One Day on the Occasion of Lanell Bowen's Retirement on June 9, 2017.
Is there a motion to adopt R-20-17 on first reader?
Move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow passage of the resolution at the meeting of its introduction?
Going to make a question? Please, go ahead.
I wanted to move it and...
Well, I thought we were talking about an amendment.
It needs to be amended, however.
Right. Okay.
It's removed in seconds.
The court clerk, you have to suspend the rules to get the second reader.
Okay, then I'll move to suspend the rules.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt R-20-17 on second reader? So moved. Second?
Second.
I'm sure if somebody wants to say discussion?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Awards and encouragement?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it has been proposed that Chase Street bear the name Lanell Lane in an honorary capacity following June the 9th. So, I offer the amendment that on page 2, line 33, we add, "And the street shall thereafter bear the name in an honorary capacity."
Is there a second to that? Any discussion?
Second.
Alderman Arnett?
That means that it'll still be Chase Street, but underneath it, there'll be honorary...
Yes. Correct. Similar to what we've implemented on Maryland Avenue and several other streets.
Alderman St. Lason?
Yes. On page 1 of the, page 1, it still speaks to, for one day. So, we need to end line 19 to strike for one day.
Well, I would say on line 20, the same amendment that we applied to page 2.
Page 1, line 3, right?
Sounds fair. Is there a second? Any other discussion on this? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt R-20-17 as amended on second reader? So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is referral of O-25-17, Issuance of General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes to the Financial Advisory Commission.
I refer O-25-17 to the Financial Advisory Commission.
Commission.
I refer O twenty-five seventeen to the Financial Advisory Commission. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the agenda has been completed.
Is there anything else for the good of the order? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you and the other members of the council are familiar, the Finance Committee has recommended that we hold the property tax rate constant for the upcoming budget, and therefore, I move that the council direct the administration to advertise the constant tax rate for the next council meeting, so that we can have a hearing at the next council meeting and consider it in due course.
Second?
I'm not sure, this is a voting matter, could you explain that one more time? You mean for the city to advertise what the rate would be if the tax rate was reduced?
Yeah. And if the tax, no, we have already advertised and held a hearing...
Correct.
...on if the tax rate were reduced.
Correct.
What I am asking is that we advertise and hold a hearing if the tax rate were not reduced, if it were left at point six four nine.
The lean of the city clerk, I'm not sure of the parliamentary rules for that.
I'm not sure what the requirements are for advertising for the tax rate. They would have to come from the county.
Alderman Pifer?
There's been some, there's been some discussion tonight after Alderman Budge, I talked about this with the office law and the Finance Director, whether that is required or, you know, sort of advisable. So I don't know who wants to speak to it.
Just from a legal perspective, I'm not sure we're required to do it. Generally, most notice provisions in the code are to put people on notice that changes could happen. That's already been done. I'm not sure legally, we need another notice. That being said, legally, we could do another notice if this body still feels the need for it.
Mr. Andrews, do you have any suggestions?
Typically, I don't recall seeing it this year, but typically, there's a memo that comes from Anarondo County related to posting of the tax rate that we've received previously. I haven't seen it this year. Yeah, something, yeah, a memo. I haven't seen it this year.
The discussion is about whether we will have another public hearing to give the community an opportunity to weigh in on whether to keep the tax rate at the constant yield, correct?
Correct. No.
No.
The constant yield is lower.
At the constant rate. Okay? The previous public hearing was on reducing the rate. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Alderman Pifer?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, unless there's some definitive, that we don't need to do it, it's, you know, we love to do public hearings. We could, you know, put it on for next meeting, knowing the vote would be the following meeting, and just to be safe, but if you wanna, so I think it makes sense. I was trying to find a way that would, you know, would help us be able to be in a position to vote at the next council meeting on the budget if we were ready, but I think that because...
Given the high turnout we've seen tonight on the tax rate...
Exactly. Break out the cots.
We can, yes. And we, if we have the, if we advertise for the next meeting, we can have our budget discussions and see where the, you know, I don't know if we're gonna end up deciding in one night, anyway.
Fair point. I certainly don't have a problem with that going forward. I think, as you said, I'm not sure how many people will come up, because nobody testified on this one, but I don't think there's a problem. We can advertise it before the next one, unless Mr. Andrews has an objection, I think.
I think the purpose of the advertising would simply be to alert the public that you'll have further consideration of whether or not to raise or lower the tax rate. Under the Comptroller's rules, we've met that requirement this evening. You don't have to re-advertise. But if you wish to re-advertise, that's certainly provocative that the council may wish, you know, may wish to do. So it doesn't have to be the same time requirements, is what I'm trying to say, which may not, if you had to, may not be able to make it between now and the twelfth of June, but you can re-advertise just for the purpose of public notice. But that's different than what the Comptroller requires, is we fulfill tonight.
So I think the summary of this is, we want to have another public hearing on what the rate would be if it wasn't cut. I haven't heard any objections from it, so I think it'd be fine if we all, I don't know if we have to vote yes, or we can all just look at Tom and tell him, we need to do it.
A question, Mr. Mayor?
Since we've taken away his sidearm, we can do that.
Yeah, we can do it. Tom, I think everyone wants you to do it. Alderman Littman?
Thank you. Ms. Leonard, if, whether or not the council has the public hearing that's been proposed, can the council have a tax increase beyond what's been discussed?
I think, and I'd have to double-check, I didn't double-check the Comptroller's rules, but I'm pretty sure the Comptroller's rules just, you have to advertise that if something is going on with the tax rate. You don't have, and that's already been satisfied. I don't believe there's any legal requirement to have to keep re-advertising every time there's amendments or people change their mind.
So the council can raise the tax rate?
Yeah. Yeah. It's already been out there notified, so people are on notice that you guys are considering it. So, yeah, I would say you can, you can have another advertising just to, you know, let people know, but you don't have any formal requirements to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, I believe the consensus was, we wanted to have it advertised, and we'll just add it to the next agenda, unless there's any objections?
But we have a motion, a second. Are we withdrawing the motion?
No.
Do a move, a second.
All right. Well, then, let's make it simple. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Duly noted, one no. Alderman Littman?
If we move on, I have another issue to bring up.
Sure.
I think this body needs to set some work sessions on the budget. We had some discussion about having a work session this Thursday or Friday. I understand, Mr. Mayor, you're not available, and I'm the last one to criticize that unavailability. We all, I know we all have challenges and schedules. But then we proposed dates, or we saw proposal of dates for June second, June fifth. Those include graduation dates, June fifth, for both locally and elsewhere, that some of us will be involved with. We need to start discussing these issues. I suspect we'll need more than one work session, so I suggest that we have the work session this Thursday or Friday, as initially discussed. Pick a day and time where as many as possible of us could be there, and then also have one on June second, so that we could have the mayor's input and further discussion. But we need to get some dates on the calendar and start discussing this as a full body.
I know there's a date on the fifth, and if you want to have one on the second, you certainly have the right to organize that as well. I don't have any objection.
I haven't heard that we had it on the fifth that it was set.
I believe an email went out earlier today that said that.
As a matter of fact, that's exactly what I was just talking to Cindy about. We created a chart at lunch for four of us that have weighed in, and we added the sixth and seventh to that date. So what if I just send you...
I'm sorry, Alderman Finlayson, but isn't that small group? So I think we need to discuss this as a...
These are big groups.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying in groups of four.
Only four were at our lunch to weigh in, but I need everybody else to weigh in with your schedule. So I will send you right now, and if you will put the Xs on the dates where you are not available.
Okay.
Okay? But right now, well, I'm not gonna say what it looks like right now, so, but I'll send it right now.
I think I got an email today that June fifth was set.
We can certainly have more, and I think if you want to send out those dates, Alderman Finlayson, we'll have it for the fifth, and we can have them on the sixth, seventh, and any other ones you want as well. So, okay.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah. And on the same, on the same lines, I did speak to the mayor today, because I was at his luncheon, and I think it's, I need to tell, inform my colleagues that there's some acute security issues going on at present with the Housing Authority, which is gonna render them without that security force to begin in the next month sometime. So, and that's monetary. So, yes, I do think it's, we do need to go into discussion before we finalize this budget. Something's gotta be done, because summer's coming here, and it's not gonna get any better.
If there's no other business, Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the good of the order, I wanted to mention that Alderman Budge, Alderman Finlayson and I have given a tour of the water purification plant today. Most impressive. I know they're, they still have things on the punch list, but it was kind of fun looking at the control panels there, and I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's finally completed, but I think we have a fine facility.
Hey, I was the only, I'm the only one on the council that ever worked there. You guys didn't invite me. Come on. Yeah, but I worked there. Jeez.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, I knew there was something else I was supposed to talk about when I gave my public safety report, and I forgot. That's because the newspaper was right under my very nose. Annapolis is highlighted on the Maryland Fire Dispatch, which is a newspaper that's distributed through fire departments in Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania, Virginia, and West Virginia. So you will see, we're on the cover of the magazine, as well as, there's an article on the inside about the accident that was mentioned earlier, where the lady was impaled during the storm. So I'll keep this on my desk if anyone's interested in looking at it. And yay for Chief Stokes.
Anything else? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Pay?
Mr. Mayor, I move to re-adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.
If you could look at it very quickly and weigh it in. I just sent it to Cindy. Yeah, I'll send it to you right now.